There's seven of us here and it's five o'clock. So, let's begin. And the first thing, the meeting is called Order. The first thing in front of us is John Carson from the three, he's the CEO of the York City Downtown Development Corporation. And everyone else, so he has a presentation, some interaction with us. John?
Thank you very much. I told I had thirty minutes, sound about right, and have me go shorter or longer, whatever is...
Shoot for that, John.
Okay, sounds great. Well, thank you very much for having me. I'll just say from the beginning, I have a nine, seven, and five-year-old at home, so my our house is very casual, informal. I have questions thrown at me, I have things thrown at me, I have people pulling on me, so I hope if you have questions tonight that you'll, you can throw things at me, it's okay. But I hope that you'll ask them. I know we've got limited time, and I mentioned that I'm happy to meet with anyone at any point in time. This is a really exciting time for Erie. We feel like there's a lot of exciting things happening downtown. We're happy to share the story and, more importantly, happy to want to figure out we can collaborate together. I'll talk about some of that tonight. What I want to do is just give you the big-picture overview of where we're at with our activities, where we're going, things that we've been working with the school district already. And I've got, this is my reminder to get started, so I'll get started. But what I feel that I always have to do with groups is just remind people of how we are formed. And we got formed in 2017 at the recommendations of Erie Refocus. Many are familiar with the comprehensive plan, I won't dwell on it. One of the issues that it identified, I know you're grappling with, is what do you do with the infrastructure for a population of one hundred and forty thousand when your population today is ninety-seven thousand? In the downtown core, we have a number of vacant, lighted, abandoned, underutilized properties. They're very costly, very expensive, they need a lot of updates. Who takes that on? And so, I applaud you for all the work that you're doing with your buildings. As I go through some of these buildings and show you what we're dealing with, I know you're in the same boat, so I can sympathize and empathize as well, but I want to show people too what exactly we're dealing with, because I know not everyone gets downtown, I know not everyone gets inside these buildings, but these are some pictures from the buildings that we have on North Park Row. They've just had years of deferred maintenance. We've got leaky roofs, we've got holes in ceilings, we've got walls that are somewhat finished, maybe need to be finished. We've got, as I mentioned, we've got on some of our roofs, they're just collecting puddles, and that just leaks through. So there are no shortage of challenges to deal with with these properties. But we are excited because we feel like there's so much momentum in the community, there's a lot of commitment from the private sector, there's been a lot of commitment from the public sector, and we are trying to go forward as fast as we can. To give you kind of a step back of the background of when I got into this role, the board had hired a real estate consulting firm to advise on a path going forward, and they laid out a very methodical approach to revitalizing the downtown core. That plan was going to take twenty to twenty-five years. And I came in and said, "It's too long, it's too slow, we need to do something now." Everyone's organized, everyone's excited, people are investing with the community, we need to move much quicker, we need to do something bigger, we need to shock the market back to life. So that's the approach that we're taking, is how do we shock the market back to life? If you think about that sort of concept with shocking the market back to life, and think about pouring a lot of energy, a lot of investment, a lot of development activity into a small footprint. So we've been focused on basically three blocks in downtown. One of the main lessons that we learned from other cities is you need to concentrate your investments. If you want to get other people investing, you have to concentrate your investments to give them confidence the market is going to turn around. We're focused on North Park Row West, Fifth and State West, and I'll get to you Fifth and State East for right now, but let me take you through the plans for North Park Row. We have acquired on this block the old Park Place and Sherlock's Building, Marlena Place, the area where Coconut Joe's, the bus depot are located, and the Dispatch Building, as we call them. We are going to turn this block into Erie's first culinary arts district. If we want people to live downtown, we know that we need to give them the amenities. It needs to be fresh, healthy food where they can buy groceries and meals to go. We also want to give them opportunities to go out, to dine, to experience the best that area has to offer from its diverse culinary talent. So we're going to put a food hall in, I'll go through these as I go through the buildings, a market, culinary incubator, commercial kitchen, potential arcade building. When we are looking at our buildings, we look about, we take kind of two outlooks on them. What's the economic impact we're going to have, and what's the social impact? With a culinary arts district, food is such a huge industry, it's going to have a huge economic impact down there, it already is, we think there could be more. But also from a social impact, downtown Erie is a USDA-designated food desert. We want to combat that by bringing a market online. We have, we're hoping with the food hall, we're going through the vendor application process now, that we get a great diverse array of offerings, so we can pick and choose and showcase some Erie's rich culinary diversity. And then, we hope with the commercial kitchen and culinary incubator, this will provide some opportunities for those who don't have the finances to start a restaurant, or to start a catering or baking business themselves. And I'll go into these one by one. We are a very metric-driven organization. I had this interesting conversation with our board, with one of our board members, and he said, "How does it work with you?" I looked at him, and I'm like, "What do you mean?" He said, "How does it work with you?" I said, "I don't know what you mean." He said, "Are you hired on a contract for some time?" And I said, "This is probably the worst advice that a former lawyer probably had given himself," but I said, "No, I don't have a contract." I told our board president, signing up to make a difference, we're going to have various set of fine goals and metrics, we're going to be meeting those goals and metrics. If not, you're going to ask me to leave, and I'm going to be okay with that. Our goals for North Park Row are to revitalize these historic buildings. Most of these buildings were built between eighteen fifty and eighteen seventy. We want to, two, provide a stable supply of fresh, healthy food, going back to the fact that downtown Erie is a USDA-designated food desert. We want to play, although we're focused on the buildings themselves, we want to play our role in helping to stimulate economic business and job growth. Four, we want to celebrate and promote Erie's rich cultural diversity. You know this very well, the school district, we've got a very diverse community here, and we want to showcase that. And then, five, we want to create a destination downtown. We don't want people to think that they're going to the food hall, or going to the market, we want people to think that they're going to downtown Erie. And not just people from within the region, but we want to get people as far away as Buffalo, Pittsburgh, and Cleveland, and Toronto, to want to come to Erie because we've made downtown a destination. So those are our goals for that block, and I'll take you through these buildings, one by one. The first properties that will probably come online early next year because they were vacant are Sherlock's and the Park Place space. It's about twenty-five thousand square feet. We're going to put a food hall in the ground floor, and then residential units on the upper floors. Has anyone been to a food hall in another city? They're kind of like boutique local food courts. You go to the mall, you get your chain restaurants, your Fuddruckers, your Savaros, but for us, with the food hall, it's more focused on local vendors. So instead of a Savaro, you have a Virgil's. Instead of a Fuddruckers, you have a notice twelve. So we want to figure out, as we're going through this vendor application process right now, what's that right mix and match of vendors? You can't just have nine pizza places, you can't just have nine ice skating places, we got to figure out what's that right mix and match. We want these buildings to be community assets. They will be open pretty much all day long, so we want people coming in in the morning, we want them coming for lunch, we want them coming back in the evening and sticking around in the evening. So what is that right mix and match to cater to those different types of areas? We'll have nine vendor stalls, one bar, and a hundred and ninety-two communal seats. Most of those seats will be able to move around. Going back to the concept of making a community asset, we want to program these spaces, so we could have live music, or on a Saturday morning, bring your kids down to see a magician, or come out. We want to have public art shows. We want to make sure that these spaces are being used as community assets. On the west end of the block, we have the Dispatch Building. This is where we will put in a market on the ground floor. I'm sure many of you have been to the West Side Market in Cleveland, or the Redding Terminal Market in Philadelphia. This will be an opportunity to showcase some local vendors who will provide some locally-sourced fruit, veg, meats, cheeses, seafood. If we want people to live downtown, we want people to be able to obtain those resources right within walking distance. Again, so USDA-designated food desert, we already have a number of people who live down there who struggle to find a stable supply of fresh, healthy food. So that's what we want to do in that space. It will be open year-round, seven days. We are not required to, but we will, there's no obligation on us to require this, but we will require our vendors to accept SNAP. We know we have a very diverse population downtown from a socioeconomic perspective, so we want to make sure that the market is available to all residents and visitors. And we're toying with the idea of, can we do, it may not go in the market, as we've gotten into these buildings and figured out the physical challenges, but we want to do some space where we can have pop-up restaurants, and I'll talk more about that in a second. Commercial kitchen equipment, as many of you know, can be very expensive. It can go from a hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, five-hundred thousand at the high-end. That's very cost prohibitive for someone to start a business, a food and beverage business, it's very cost prohibitive for someone to start a restaurant. We want to take on that financial burden. For us, any money that we're making from these buildings are going to go back into these buildings, whether it's with the maintenance, the rehabilitation, or the programming. So we're looking at putting in commercial kitchen equipment that can be utilized as basically coworking space for those who have, who are in the food and beverage business or want to be. This will save them the cost, the resources of getting their own equipment, they can come in and use it. If you think of, if you're a caterer and you're working out of your home, but you need a commercial kitchen, you can come and use it. Or if you're a baker and you're working out of a shared space, you can come and use this as well, and just be more convenient and more cost-effective. This has been done in other communities before, and it's been very effective in terms of helping to stimulate economic and job growth. Same with culinary incubators. It's the same concept for a business incubator. Someone's got an idea that they are, that they know very well, someone's, they make the world's best pepperoni balls, but they don't know anything about packaging, they don't know anything about marketing. It's already done in this room, I know that, so. They don't know about, they're not lawyers, they're not accountants. So what we want to do is surround those individuals with that talent, with those resources that they need to start and/or scale a business. We've had some great conversations already with, thanks to the superintendent introducing us to the Culinary Arts Program here at the school district, about ways we can partner together, get your students down to get, either using some of this equipment, getting some experience with the vendors that are there at the food hall or at the market, getting tapped into that pipeline of the food and beverage and hospitality businesses. We would love to figure out ways to partner that, to partner further on that as those start to come online. So I just hope that you'll put your thinking caps on, and figure out how we're putting all this on North Park Row, and they can be an asset to the school district. One of the things that we're looking at right now is going back to the historic integrity of the middle of this block. There was an opera house from eighteen sixty to nineteen thirty-nine. It caught on fire in nineteen thirty-nine, they tore down, and they were building these art modern Greyhound bus stations around the country. And so, what we want to do, and that's why you kind of see that there's a gap in the middle between this building and the building next to it, was for the buses to pull in through the middle of the block. What we've talked about doing is putting in a, you can see the gap here, we've talked about putting in a potential arcade building. I don't know if anyone's been to, there's one in Cleveland, there's some over in Europe, but it's basically a inner courtyard that has a skylight, and it would connect the food hall, this is an example from Ann Arbor, Michigan. It connects the length of the block, and the vendors have access to the street, but also access to the inner courtyard. As we think about our buildings, as I mentioned, we want them to be community assets. We have to be cognizant of our weather. We have consultants tell us all the time that this worked well in Miami, Florida, and this worked well in Mexico City, and I tell them, "When we have Miami, Florida's weather, and we have Mexico City's sunshine, well, maybe we could build that." But knowing that we get snow, we get rain, we have to think about how are we building community assets with that weather in mind. So if we do an arcade, we would, same things with the food hall. Make sure that space is programmed, allow people to come down and use it, it would have the skylights so people could still get that natural light, but also be sheltered from the elements, so it could be utilized any time of the year. And this is what it would look, potentially. We're still working through the renderings, when's all said and done. And you can see, from a bird's-eye view, here's where the food hall is. This is State Street, this is North Park Row, Peach, and Fifth. We want this block to be active, so we're putting access points on Fifth, on State, on North Park Row. The connection from the market to the food hall would be right in the middle here. Going back to, we want this to be a destination. We want you to come downtown and spend hours in the community. So if you go to the food hall for lunch, and get a great meal, and linger going to some shops along the arcade, or see the public art, or listen to a public music performance, and then go get your groceries from the market, that would be a great, we would see that as a great success, because that's what we want, we want to get you downtown and make things happen. How do you stay downtown because there's reasons to be downtown? The next block that we're, I should pause. Any questions about that block? The next block that we're focused on is what we call Fifth and State East. We acquired this building, this building, and this building from the Art Museum, and we acquired this building from the DeLuca family. Even when I talk about having a cluster of properties together, and we're looking at these three blocks, we even think about that on a micro level, and thought we could acquire these, these four buildings together, which would give us the opportunity to really revitalize that corner here. The Art Museum, as many know, had some financial challenges, so this was being used as storage, this building was empty, the upper floors of this building were empty, and these apartments were in need of some renovation. So, I'll take you through. The cashier's house is where our office is right now. Historic building, it's got some water damage, I'll show you some pictures. Plan is used to restore it. We're subleasing our third floor to a tech company that relocated here, and that's been a great partnership. The Banelle Block is next door to us. Again, it's got some vacant storefronts, some museum shop pulled out their framing shop. The upper floors are vacant, I'll show you that. Because these buildings are mostly intact, there's not a whole lot for us to do except for the interiors, but you can see kind of what we're working with here. This is the water damage inside the cashier's house. There's some random holes in the wall, and some garbage in the back. The back doors is boarded up. This is the second floor of Banelle. Again, this one's not in bad shape, it's just vacant, so we've been talking with a number of potential tenants who are in need of office space, and this, the turnaround in these is a little bit easier than in North Park Row. I did find out they need a new HVAC system, but we're working through that. This is the third floor of Banelle, it's being used as storage by the Historical Society right now. We've talked with them about moving that out when we're ready, so they understand that. But the plan, we're still working through what's going to go upstairs. We've got plans for six residential units, but it's quite expensive, and so we're also looking at office space. We know that there's a demand for downtown office space, and so we're trying to figure out what's the best fit for this third floor. At one point, it was a, I think, like a winter wonderland, I don't know if anyone had been there at some point in time, but they left the kind of the snowman, and the Christmas tree, and the snowman on the wall, and those still remain. I can't promise that those will remain after we go in and renovate, but here's, to give you an example of what it would look like after we go through. We've heard from prospective tenants that they're looking for, they want to, they too want to see this, the historic integrity preserved, so they're looking for that exposed brick. They want the big windows, they want to see the natural light coming in. I should have mentioned this about North Park Row. The plan is to bring back some nice big windows. If you think of the windows that you see at maybe Amber and Forge, or Starbucks downtown, or Molly Brannigan's, those are the types of windows that we're going to put in these buildings. We want people to see that there's life downtown. If you're walking by, you want, we want people to, you to see that there are people inside, so hopefully you'll see someone you haven't seen in a while, you'll reconnect, you'll go in, you'll stop, you'll stay, and so it all builds to the fabric of the community downtown. Here's to give you an example of what the residential units might look like when they're And then, the third block that we're focused on is Fifth and State West. This is where the former McDonald's is located. McDonald's last year made the decision to close that store, and offered to sell it to us. So, part of the, part of the agreement required us to demolish the building within thirty days after the closing. McDonald's didn't want to see a shuttered franchise building sitting around, so we had to demolish that, but because of our development timeline, we weren't going to start building on that site until the beginning of next year, which meant that we had a vacant lot on our hands. And we were able to, for those, I don't know, is anyone participating in the Flagship City Curling League? Has everyone seen it on the news? Okay, good. So we thought this is just a fun, quick, easy way to activate that space for the next several months. We're trying to figure out what comes next. They are synthetic rims, so they can be pulled out and moved, but we are looking at putting in a mixed-use building. Right now, this is probably on the big ground, I think we might look at scaling this back a little bit. It's about five stories, eighty-eight thousand square feet. We do have a letter of intent for a tenant to take up the ground floor, we're looking at residential apartments on the upper floors, and trying to just make sure that, again, going back to what I mentioned earlier, is putting in that glass so people see that there's life downtown. People, as they're driving through, as they're passing through, know that there's a lot of activity happening downtown. Here's a view from State Street. Again, I think we're still kind of looking, working through the plans and make pair back that a little bit. When I mentioned that we're looking at this from an economic impact and a social impact, I just wanted to run you through some of the numbers. Before I get to this, though, we are in conversations with a number of different investors. We, our team was out in Salt Lake City last week, the Sorenson Impact Center, which is a think tank that studies social impact investing, hosted a conference and contest with Ford's Magazine, and we were one of the grand prize winners for our work on opportunities. The Chamber and the EDC were the entities that were, they showed up to get the award, but it was awarded to the entire city of Erie because everybody in the community's been working on these revitalization efforts right now, so we are happy to go and accept the award, but we said this is on behalf of the entire community, because there's a lot of people working on reinvesting the community, revitalizing the community, and moving the community forward. I know the school district's been doing that as well, so I thank you so much. As we were out there, we talked with a number of impact investors who are intrigued by the Erie story. They know it's different than other communities across the country. These are investors who look all across the country. We're talking about some additional investments. None of those investments would be possible without Lerta though, so thank you very much. We've spent a lot of time crunching these numbers. Our investments are all, as of right now, are all privately funded. There's no money coming from the Commonwealth, or the federal government, or the city, so this is all private investment. I appreciate you taking that, those steps in the last year to take a look at the long-term economic help of the community, and that's been a huge benefit to us as we talk with these investors and run them through the financial models. We've spent eight-point-six million dollars to acquire these properties to date. It's after those, all those plans, we'll spend between sixty-eight and eighty-four million. Right now, we have about a hundred, just over a hundred and seventy thousand square feet, but as you can see, a hundred and ten thousand of it is vacant, there's a lot of vacant space. So after we're set, all said and done, there'll be close to three hundred thousand, that's all being utilized. The property values today is just at three point, almost three-point-five. Afterwards, if we're looking at a, right now, we're looking at a property's appraised for about sixty-five percent of what you spend to acquire and to redevelop them. So at that ratio, we're looking at between forty-four and fifty-four million. Obviously, part of what we're doing is, as I mentioned, shock the market back to life, so we hope that goes up to a hundred percent, which would mean, although we're paying taxes of a hundred and eleven thousand today, we'll eventually be paying taxes between one-point-five and one-point-eight, split between the school district, the county, and the city. Again, that is, that is based, though, on this assessment value, so we hope that that assessment value goes up. I don't know, we may be one of the few who actually want our properties to be assessed higher, because we want these values to go up. These, the total number of businesses will be between forty-three and forty-seven. Some of these ground floor spaces are still to be designed, they can be anywhere from, for example, we have some buildings that could have three a thousand-square-foot retail spaces, or it could be one three-thousand-square-foot spaces. So we're still working through that, but we know from our partners, who we've been working through with this, that that will result in between four-hundred-and-twenty-five and six-hundred-and-one new jobs downtown. And when, again, the focus for the upper floors is primarily residential units. With these plans, it'll bring about a hundred and twenty-nine to a hundred and fifty-nine residential units online. Again, still trying to go through the plans to figure out what's the right mix and match. So, the social impact, as I mentioned, we look at both the social impact. Again, the food desert issue will be addressed by public market. We, downtown Erie's been at, one-six-five-one has been identified as one of the poorest codes in the country, median income's ten thousand eight hundred dollars. We hope that by adding all these new businesses, it will create new economic opportunities, it will raise the salaries and economic opportunities for all down there. One of our potential partners in the market said that they would pay a living wage, and that's a great benefit in that neighborhood, in any neighborhood. We know that in 2017, Erie was named the worst city in America for African-Americans. We, again, going back to, our mission is to revitalize the downtown core through property development, but we want to play a role in all these issues that we are facing as a community, so if we can showcase our diversity through these buildings, through the culinary area, through the food hall, we think that that would provide some opportunities for members of the community that have been historically disadvantaged. And then, downtown Erie, for that, for, if you've been down there, when there isn't a game, or a concert, or an event, it can be pretty quiet on nights and weekends. We hope by bringing all these commercial spaces online, it will attract people downtown. We're also trying to be intentional about it. We know that we need to do different programming, events, activities, ourselves in partnership with other groups like the Downtown Partnership, Erie Arts and Culture, to really drive people to downtown. So, I know I'm coming to the end of my presentation, but I started with Erie Refocus, I wanted to end with Erie Refocus. We know that this is a very exciting time for the community, but it also presents a number of challenging questions. There, there's difficult decisions to be made, some decisions that we may have hunted on in the past or avoided in the past, so we try to keep in mind that now is the time to make those tough decisions, now is the time to be bold, because the community is organized, the community is focused, and the community is reinvesting in itself. Thank you for having me tonight. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but happy to sit down one-on-one with anyone as well.
For the others, questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
I was going to comment, I have a question, and thank you for addressing that. Very interesting and exciting, I think, seriously. I'm really glad to see that it's all going to be taxable, and you're paying, will pay more taxes. First question, will the taxes, will we make a, after, you know, some type of, payment like a pilot program or something like that, but see if you're hoping to give us a lot more money in the future.
That, that, that is a good sign that I'm helping, that means the valuation of our properties, which we need, is growing. And although we are a nonprofit and exempt from paying property tax, our board has made the decision to pay property taxes because we feel it's our part in being part of the community.
John, thank you, your energy and enthusiasm, just continue, so I'm not cutting out if there's any more questions, or if you do have to speed in some of the hours in the next twenty minutes. Let's keep the door open. Let's keep the door open and invite you back, and you're welcome to continue to present to us if you can, if you'd like, some lightning.
I, I'm hoping, thank you very much, that I can come back, because I hope as things start to come online and we get further along on some of these plans, that we'll have more to update you on.
Any other questions for now?
Joseph, you indicated that you paid about $8 million for a property that's appraised at $3.5 million, so that's your job security, right? You've got to show why that occurred. And I realize time is one of the factors here, you know, you want to move ahead. But for example, if we had a reassessment right now, those properties would go up, what, two and a half times, and it would also affect other property owners downtown that have different objectives than, than your altruistic efforts. It'd be quite a dislocation to the downtown if it were reassessed based on your sales prices, particularly that of McDonald's.
One of the-
And I will say, that was the lightest corner downtown, I would say, park place and, you know what I mean, it was working down there better than most of the downtown before we went in there.
Well, it was vacant when we acquired it, we decided to close the bars, so it was vacant when we acquired it. But, you know, one of the challenging things that our board grabbed was, was how, how public should they be? Because as soon as they announced we've got, we raised $30 million, we're working even within this small area, every property owner, in their mind, thought their property values shot through the roof. In other cities-
Two blocks away, I agree with you, I'm right by here, you helped out.
Every other city, the one piece of advice, be quiet for a while and get a property. Because as soon as you make yourselves public, the property values are going to skyrocket. And so, they have, and we way overpaid, those property, those properties today aren't anywhere close to what we paid for them, but if we don't do it, we don't. So, our board of expectations know that they're willing to take this short-term loss because they're making a big bet on the future here.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We actually have student handbook updates, Mrs. Zaburski and Ms. Warrenall.
Ms. Warrenall? Actually, what we just heard is a, is a really, it's a segue into why I'm here to talk about the student handbook for two minutes, I recognize I'm in a time crunch. But typically, every single year, I am part of a team that reviews the school district's student handbook and code of conduct. We, we look at it every year, we do revisions based on legislative, regulatory, and judicial changes in the law, and we also blast out and request input from all the building administrators as to issues that have arisen during the year, things that we see happening that we need to address or update in the student handbook. And typically, we don't really come and talk to the board about the fact that this is happening. You approve it usually in June or July, and the 13,000 copies get run off and we send them out to the parents and the kids. But the reason why we wanted to come to you today is because this year, we've already started that process. We've already met in a large group with building administrators, with central administration, with me, and also, we've included Ken Nixon and the people on his team. And that's because we're making more of a concerted effort now to really look at concepts such as PBIS, as Positive Behavioral Reinventions and Supports, at the building-wide level. And, and we're looking at concepts such as a heightened awareness of police referrals, a wariness not to allow our schools to turn into a school-to-prison pipeline, an awareness, heightened awareness that we want to make sure that we are equitably implementing the provisions in the program. So, those goals, those issues, have certainly been on the administration's, the building principals' radar screens for a number of years, but this year particularly, we are focusing a critical eye on this document as to how can we, you know, better align the language in this document with those goals. And it might take a couple of years to do that, because one of the things we talked about is, we don't want to, we don't want to put things in this document that we aren't ready to deliver in every school in the district. Some schools are a little bit further ahead with their PBIS, their building-wide Positive Behavior Support Plans than others, but we just wanted the, the board to be aware that these issues are being addressed with a critical eye with regard to this material document. And also, within this document, are the districts, it's a, it's a description of the due process rights that students have when they face suspension, when they face expulsion, and, you know, how, how important it is and how the district's actually very good at ensuring, at least from a procedural side, that we have unity, lack of disparity, equitable implementation of this document. But it all comes full circle. So, I, I wanted to just let the board know that we're working on it. If any of you have issues that fall within this region, I, I really would love it if you would reach out to me, or to Bea, or to Brian, so that we can, you know, take your input and talk about it at the committee level, figure out how, what's, how that could translate into changes with this document. And also, those of you that are involved on the suspension, well, not really suspension, but at the expulsion level, meet with me so that there's a better working understanding between, you know, the prosecution of when we do have to enforce these rules, you know, at, at a building or a board hearing level. And again, with like your input about, you know, that process as well. Our hands are tied to a large degree with state laws and federal laws and regulations with regard to due process, but certainly, it's something that I think there should be open communication between the board and the administrator and the legal team who draft these documents. So, that, we just wanted to raise your awareness that that's going on behind the scenes right now.
Thanks, Jen. Bea, you go?
No, that's, she was very elegant.
Thanks. Roosevelt?
So, in front of you, you will see a timeline that the architects put together, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of how the raising of Roosevelt is going along and what that process is going to look like. You know, tonight, the, the agenda item will be to do the asbestos fieldwork, and then everything kind of follows suit from that. I know that the architects have a lot of work to do as far as bid documents in order to take everything down. But according to this timeline, and hopefully you can stick to it, that we're looking at, you know, complete demolition and restoration of the site by the end of October. A couple of things that I at least wanted to make sure I mentioned is that since this is really the public, the, the comments that we've received back have actually been good. And what we've actually heard and read it multiple times and spoke to a number of people is that people want a part of the building. And so, in kind of doing that, we were thinking that there might be an opportunity that we could save as many bricks as possible and possibly sell those to individuals, we're not at, like, for a price of a dollar, $10, whatever it is, but we can sell to people a piece of Roosevelt, wanted to take it down. And then, before that even happens, what we would like to do is permit someone to go in who has an eye for salvage, so that they can go in and really take out those bits of buildings, whether it's hardware or the old slate, soapstone, tops, two science labs, anything like that, that number one, could be reused, which would actually make me really happy, and anything that really can go back into the community and so these people can have a piece of old Roosevelt.
Would we charge them, say, strip out all the-
Yes.
-funding lines and-
Yes.
...benefit.
We at one point, I'm sorry, we at one point did have an auctioneer go through that in the other buildings to see if it was worthwhile to actually do an auction, and maybe they felt that there wasn't enough value to run a complete auction there. So, again, there's not much left for them building value, but I think, you know, we'll explain what you put together, we'll take care of all this there.
What would the, the district's plans be, what we have stored at the service side? The, you know, the tiles and all the stuff?
We really have not discussed that yet.
Yes, is there any issue with bidding here as to the apprenticeship requirement of demolition contractors, does that issue have to, not bid?
I'm not sure that we have gotten to that part. I haven't actually seen the bid documents on one, and the architects are still looking at us. I would have to do the research into whether or not there is an apprenticeship for a workforce demolition, I mean.
I'm guessing probably not.
Yeah.
A person that might know that would be discussion, right? I'd see him under the mic.
Mr. President, I would not want to get into this again. What I would recommend is, you know, we're planning on having a discussion about this in the near future, and maybe we push this off the bids on or so, so the board can have that discussion and finalize the responsible contractor policy before we go to things other than there's no issues.
Well, that's, that's a good suggestion. I wouldn't be surprised if there was an apprenticeship demolition work, but to be concerned with it, that's just my assumption.
We, I, I don't think that pushing it back a month is going to really hamper the timeline. I mean, this is kind of arbitrary timeline, I mean, when the building finally goes down, the building probably down. The, the biggest thing, and, and if we delay a month, it really won't have any effect, is that during the invasion work, they are going to need access to water, and right now, all the water to Amesworth, which is the closest place, is winterized. So, we really can't even start to do any kind of evasion until we turn the water back on again.
Since this is just very pressing on the timeline, let's just try to listen, stick to it, and just as we can, I imagine, we're, we're, we love Erie Public Schools, Erica?
Good evening, everybody. So, just a, a quick update on We Love Erie's Public Schools Week, which was last week. I'm happy to report that by all accounts, it seems like it went very well. For the new school board members, it is an annual celebration of everything about this district, and it's put on and organized by the Foundation for Erie's Public Schools. This year, that group decided to purchase new yard signs and buttons and bumper stickers, magnets, things like that to help spread the word, so hopefully, you've seen those pop up across the community. The week was a lot of fun. We had schools throughout the district doing their own spirit, fun spirit events. The foundation also arranged for a pop-up coffee vendor to have pop-up coffee events at the data summit here and also at Erie High and Collegiate Academy. They were really well-attended. By all accounts, our teachers and staff really enjoyed that as a teacher appreciation part of the week. But what I found most gratifying and, and fun for me was that new this year, or at least new in the format that we did it, was some student forums with Brian. We had one day set aside Friday or Thursday for forums where we had a group of elementary school students, a middle school forum and a high school forum, where it was very informal, a chance to just sit and, and talk with Brian about what was on their minds. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
It was a great day, I went with a lot of homework, a lot of having things we can work on, and I haven't talked to you yet, but dress code is number one on our list, so it's probably something we need to, to address with the handbook this year. I'm the only one that I don't think we're going to be able to address, as one of the students have recommended that we have every money off.
Almost happened.
So, it was clear that these students really kind of thought about these issues, they came prepared, and, but also, that they just looked like they were having a fun time. It was, like I said, very informal, lunch was over pizza, breakfast was over doughnuts. So, hopefully, whether it's We Love Erie's Public Schools Week or other events, we can do something like this because I thought it was successful on a number of fronts, so.
Mr. President?
Can I just add one thing here? You sent out a list of the activities-
Yes.
-but they were never updated. So, like the forum that Brian went to, if we wanted to pop in or something, we didn't know where and or by.
Okay.
And the coffee pop-up at Erie High was not listed, just collegiate, and the data summit were. So, if you could update it-
Okay.
-so, we have an idea if we want to pop in.
Okay, absolutely.
For us retired people.
You're welcome. The pop-up at Erie High was on Monday and fell outside the week just because of scheduling, like the following Monday, this past Monday, so, but I, I absolutely can communicate that.
John?
I just want to say, Mr. Spiegel represented the board at the scholarships that were given from the foundation-
Thank you.
And so, maybe you want to share that?
And thank you very much. Probably the, the highlight of the week from the foundation's point of view was awarding $22,000 worth of classroom mini-grants on a variety of really cool, interesting projects, everything from literacy to science. We have outdoor classrooms on the way at DePaulo, so, for things like that. And also, for the first time this year, through the generosity of Brian and Linda Graff, we were, the foundation was able to award five teachers with $1,000 each with, in professional development grant money to help further their education.
Thank you, Erica.
I'd just like to thank Erica for her hard work last week, she was all over the district pulling everything together, these things all come together by themselves, so thank her, you know.
We have to be in our seats in 14 minutes, so we'll have an executive session, we'll forego the, 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 any questions, concerns, please, first, have that, executive session now, so I ask anyone who is essential to the executive session, to themselves.